Johnson.
Mayor, if you give me a minute, let us just shift gears to the next presentation.
Take your time.
I'm going to ask the staff who are assisting in the presentation if you would come to the staff table. Chief Matty, Nancy Urcheck, and Linda McDermott. Mayor, may I start up?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning again. For the record, Fay Johnson, City Administrator, I'm going to lead the presentation regarding the fire assessment fee. And I will be supported and joined by members of staff at the staff table. The Deputy City Attorney, Nancy Urcheck, the City's Budget Manager, Linda McDermott, and the City's Fire Chief, Chief Matty. So I want to first start with putting in perspective the objectives of this presentation. One is to confirm that the use of the fire fees do in fact comply with the City Ordinance Governance Act, which is Ordinance 4141-08. I want to start out by emphatically stating that there has been no misuse of the City's fire fees. Secondly, an objective is to clear up the discrepancy about the 2019 commitment on the use of the fire fee increase revenue. I want to have a discussion on the fallacies and what was represented to the board at that time, and then point out the missed opportunities to rectify the record. Also, I want to clarify the transparency issue related to administration providing quarterly fire assessment fee work sessions. So again, three objectives: to confirm, clear up, and clarify. And before I get into that, I want to, I'm going to ask you, Mayor, and members of the board to keep two things in mind. And Mayor, you have heard me say one of them on a regular basis. Every story that is presented sounds factual in nature until it lines up with the other side of the issue. There are always two sides of an issue. So I ask you and the board to at least give administration the benefit of the doubt until you hear the other side of the issue. Secondly, I am asking the board to bear in mind that because you don't use funds in a matter that someone else prefers that you use them, does not mean that you are misusing funds. You may prefer that our general fund be used in a certain manner, and we use it at your direction in another manner. That does not equate to misuse of funds. And then the other thing I want to clarify is that as I see my credential manager, there are consequences if I were, as the City Administrator, knowingly take action to either misuse, misappropriate, or misapply public dollars. That's not an action that I am going to put 35 years of a stellar career in jeopardy. And just think about that. Why would I? What do I stand to gain by knowingly misusing, misappropriating, or misapplying fire assessment fees or any other fees in the City's coffers? It does not make logical sense. So we go on now to the agenda. As an overview, I want to just go back and highlight the inception of how the fire assessment fee came about. And I know for most of you sitting on the dice, this is going to be redundant, and I ask that you bear with me, and I'm going to go through it very quickly. Then to do a summary of the collected fire fees between FY '09 and FY '18, and the uses of those categories. And we're breaking, I'm breaking it up into those three components because it's relevant here as we look at it. Because in those three-year periods between FY '09 and FY '18, we had one set of rates. Then we had another set of rates for FY '18 that was implemented. And then one in FY '19 that was for fiscal year '20. Want to do a summary of the FY '21 operating expenses, then address the threshold issues, and then go into next steps. So as I look at the Fire Department's Arc Chart, we did this from a functional standpoint. And I want to thank Chief Matty for helping to put this into perspective. So as you look at the functional Arc Chart of the Fire Department, everything in terms of those functions are eligible to be funded by the General Fund. And had in fact been funded all by the General Fund up until the point that the fire assessment fee was enacted. When the fire assessment fee came into the picture, everything in this function of the Fire Department was eligible with one major exception, and that's emergency medical. And I think the board is fully aware that it is not permissible to use fire assessment fees on emergency medical. And I will tell the board that no fire assessment fees has been used in that regard. So as we move on, looking at the inception of the fire fee. Under the City's, under its home rule powers that is granted by Florida statute, it allows the City to impose special assessment on properties. And sometimes you see special assessments related to stormwater. But certainly in this case, as it would be with stormwater, the properties must receive a special benefit from the provided source. By way of inception, during the summer of 2008, which was fiscal year '08, the City retained Government Services Group, acronym GSG, to develop a fire fee special assessment program. At the time of that discussion, the Forest Department budget that was adopted was $31.7 or $31.2 million for talking purposes. 227 FTEs in the City's population was 103, 663. At the Board's June 2, 2008 City Commission Meeting, the first public hearing on Ordinance Number 4141-08, authorizing the special assessment imposition and collection, was acted on by the Board. At the Board's June 16, 2008 City Commission Meeting, the second public hearing adopting Ordinance 4141-08, authorizing the special assessment imposition and collection. Along with that, as a companion item, Resolution Number 21208 actually approved the assessment method and established the rate. And then the program itself became effective October 1 of 2008, which was the fiscal year '09. So when we look at the Ordinance 4141-08, when you look at Article 1, Section 101, and I handed out copies for members of the dice because recognizing that's very small print to read, so you have a hard copy in front of you. It lays out the various uses that is permissible for the fire assessment fee. And I want the Board to take particular note to how the ordinance lays it out. It goes through an affable ties use, starting with A to P. So the use of those funds have to fall within one of these various categories that is permissible by ordinance of the City Commission. And you're going to see these letters referenced later on in the presentation. So in terms of how we budget, when you look at what the ordinance permit, we budget on a categorical then line item basis. The ordinance, if we take what is allowed in the ordinance and apply it to how the city budget is laid out, it allows for salaries that would be in the category of personnel services. It allows for the various line items that's listed under the category of material and services. Some of those fuel, parts, maintenance, repairs, and utility, computer services, labor, and the list goes on. It allows for capital, and capital tend to be the focus of the discussion when we talk about the fees. However, I don't want it to get lost in translation that salaries are not permitted. It's clearly permitted in the ordinance. It's clearly permitted in the ordinance. So when we look at what the Board did back at Resolution Number 21208, when the program was first enacted, these were the rates that were approved. The residential at $25, and then the square footage rate on the various other categories, which are non-residential properties. By way of the budget again, the fire assessment fee is actually put in a separate fund from the General Fund, and that fund is 131, a capital fund. And it tends to be for things like improvements, replacement of fire equipment, and machinery. And you have seen this before, that the fee itself provides comprehensive fire services related to suppression, prevention, and other fire services. And then some of the benefits that were talked about, how it is allocated to protect the value and integrity of improvements to real property, to reduce the cost of fire insurance. And that relates to the City's ISO rating, which is a benefit to our residents. I think our rating right now, we're at a two, and we're working hard to get to a one. It enhances the market perception and property values. So when we look at this first period, where the fee stayed at $25 for residential and for the square footage of the categories that are indicated in the resolution. During that time, 19.6, for rounded purposes, $20 million was collected in the fire assessment fee. 11.4 million was allocated to Fund 113 for various capitals. That H, if you look at your hard copy in the ordinance, that's what the H relates to. That is permissible under that ordinance. When we look at the balance of that, the 8.2 million was allocated to the General Fund for salaries related to the Fire Department. The fire assessment fee revenue that was in the General Fund that was done for salaries was done between fiscal year '10 and fiscal year '16. And it was for personnel expenses in the Fire Department on the fire side of the operation, not medical. If you look at the ordinance under Item H, it clearly says for salaries. In addition to the 20 million for talking purposes that was collected during that period, the City also took out a line of credit of about 15 million. Only a portion of that line of credit was drawn down. The ordinance allows for debt service under the fire fee. That debt service again is picked up in the ordinance. So if you look at just some of the capital purchases that were done, the blue line is a break between what was done prior to the fire fee being enacted, and then above the line relates to the fire stations that came online and refunded by fire fee revenues. So that's Station 5, 4, 8, and 9. And then some of the other capital-related projects that was done, fire station one door and window repairs, seven roof repairs, two roof repairs, and the exhaust ventilation system, all permissible under the ordinance. So now we go to when the City then began to increase the fee from the $25 on the residential side. So as part of the FY '19 budget process, there was, in June of 2018, Resolution Number 2118, which came 10 years after that initial fee imposition. And if you look at that resolution, which is a public record for everyone to take a look at, some of the things that it noted in terms of why the fee increase was being considered was that, you know, it was to offset the increased operating costs of the department. The Fire Department's operating cost was noted in the resolution had increased significantly since the imposition of the fee in 2008. At that time in FY '18, the adopted budget for the department was 40.1 million. The FTEs had grown to 231, and the City's population had increased to 112,906. The resolution also noted that there was additional costs anticipated due to additional call volume from the increased population. It assumed additional maintenance of fire trucks and equipment, acquisition of additional equipment, hoses and apparatus for fire stations four and eight, and then also to provide funding for additional firefighters that was initially funded through grants. So again, if you look at Resolution Number 2018 that was approved by the Board at that time, it increased the fee for the first time since 2008 from 25 on the residential side to $50, and then it increased in the square footage for all of the non-residential categories. So if you see those side by side, that's the difference in what was first enacted in the green column, the second column, from $25 to what was enacted by Resolution 201-18 in blue, when it went from 25 to 50, and then the various increases in the square footage. So now we go to the question of the day, where all of the threshold issues seem to be centered. In the fiscal year '19 budget process, which would implement an increase in the fire fee for fiscal year '20, that increase came the very next year, one year after the fiscal year '18 increase from 25 to 50. At that time fiscal year '19, the adopted budget for the Fire Department was $41.6 million or $42 million for talking purposes. The Fire Department had grown to an FTE complement of 234.75 employees, and the City's population had increased to 115,176. The resolution indicates that Government Services Group, GSG, updated the fire assessment methodology. It noted that the operating costs of the department significantly increased. It anticipated additional costs related to the firefighters' pension and building renovations. It also recognized the acquisition and maintenance of fire trucks, equipment, hoses, and apparatus. I want to footnote that from the very inception of the program, the Board did not implement the full amount that was determined by GSG. The Board didn't implement the full amount in the 2018 increase from 25 to 50, nor did the Board implement the full amount that was permitted by the study for FY '19, which went into effect for FY '20. So clearly, the intent was for the fire fee to fund a portion of the costs for the department that were eligible to be funded, not to fully fund those expenses. So when we look at the adoption of the increase, where it went from $50 to $100 on the residential side, at the Board's August 19, 2019 meeting, it was a work session. Your former City Administrator did that presentation to the Board and made the case, and he was assisted by our current Fire Chief, Chief Matty. That presentation then led to the August 26, 2019, public hearing, wherein Resolution Number 252-19 actually established the new rates. And those new rates, as indicated, took it from the $50 the year before on the residential side to 100, and then the various increases in the square footage. I would note that I believe in the institutional category, that rate actually decreased slightly. So again, if you look at the history of the rates here on the fire fee, 25 for that 10-year period, the $50 for that one year, and then it increased to $100 where it stands presently. So if you look at how the City has progressed in terms of population, how the Fire Department has grown in terms of FTEs, and in terms of its budget over the period that are connected to the increase of the fees and the enactment, you see how we started out at 32 million, 40 million, and now at 42 million. And then you see how the City's population has grown and how the FTE count has grown as it relates to FY '19. The FTE count is actually higher now than the 234 because we've added additional firefighters. So again, if we just look at in terms of how the revenue has come in from FY '19 to the current year FY '21, you see we started at the 4 million, then went to 6.9 million or 7 million, to then 7.7 million in terms of the adopted budget. 7.7 million if we use 8 million for rounded, for talking purposes. And then look at interest, the total revenue. There were some carryforward dollars. If you look at the bottom of the slide, you see what the total revenue was for those three years. 4.5 million rounded for fiscal year '19, 6.9 or 7 million for fiscal year '20, 8.8 or 9 million for the current fiscal year of '21, which is ending very shortly. When you look at the carryforward for fire stations seven, one, and two, the roof replacement, the door and windows, and the roof repairs, the letters there indicate where those uses are permitted under the ordinance. And again, you have the ordinance in front of you for reference. If we look on the expenditure side by way of categories, which is how we budget, and the line item detail is available to the Board as it is available to members of the public. The Personnel Services, it tells you how much was used during that, those three fiscal years. Material Services, the internal service charge, capital outlay, and then debt service. Again, the highlighted letters in yellow indicate in the ordinance where those expenses are permitted. Again, the Board has that for reference in hard copy, and hard copy can be made available to members of the public as well. So just by way of some highlights for this fiscal year in the adopted budget, we did allocate a portion of the fire fee for salaries and benefits. One was the Assistant Fire Chief, which was a new position put into the fire fee. And that was done, if the Board will recall, for this year's budget, because we were grappling with that $7 million revenue loss, we were looking at ways to take the burden off of the General Fund. This was one of the methodologies that was utilized. The other positions are dialed in there to the tune of $1.6 million. For the nine firefighters that were dialed into the fire fee, we used a portion of that to purchase their uniforms and bunker gear. And then there is internal service funds related to IT and insurance that was also covered by the fee. Again, the yellow highlighted letters relate to the categories in the ordinance that allows for the funds to be spent on those particular items or categories. And we can, you'll go on to other highlights in terms of how the fees have been utilized. Again, the letters in yellow corresponds to letters within the ordinance that legally permit the City to use fire fee revenue for those various items. They all relate to the Fire Department. They do not relate to any other operation. And that list continues. When you look at debt service, we took out a letter of credit. And so that's the debt service that we are paying for that letter of credit, the eight-some million dollars that were drawn down. So again, we'll get to, I guess, the issue of the day here with this matter. Answering the question on whether or not, at this present time, under the current administration, the use of the fire fees are being done in a legally permissible manner. If you look again at Ordinance 4140, we are complying with the ordinance in terms of how the fees are used. If you look at Article 1, Section 1.01, those are the various categories that those funds are being used for. You have the Deputy City Attorney, who made the presentation to the Board at the onset of this, has been integrally involved. If there are legal questions, I would ask that you direct those to Ms. Urcheck about the legal permissibility of those funds in that manner, as well as the City Attorney. So I want to pause here, Mayor. So if there are questions of the attorneys, those can be asked before I go on to Number 2.
Are there any questions, comments on the first portion, Item 1? The permissibility of the use of the funds? Any questions? Okay, there are none, so you can proceed, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go on to address the discrepancy from my perspective of what was presented to the Board back in August of 2019 on the increase in the fees from the $50 to the $100, which is in place now. And having reviewed the written record, having reviewed the video from the meeting, I want to recognize that while the written record lays out actions and what was put into the record, there may have been one-on-one discussions with the Commissioners and with the Mayor on the use of these funds that I certainly wouldn't be privy to. And I'm not going to try to speak to that. If there was written commitments made to members of the Board that doesn't track with the action that you all adopted, that's something I'm going to ask you to share with me because I'm not going to make any innuendos about what might have been said and what might have been promised. I have to go on the written record and what I heard by looking at the videos. So I'm also going to speak to the missed opportunities, how we came about with adding the nine additional firefighters, what was included and excluded from the adopted budget. So if I can do this... Where's my IT guy? So let's take a walk back to 2019 August, when the presentation was made. And that was a very long meeting. There was quite a bit of numbers from the public. But we're just going to do a snippet because it- but we're just gonna do a snippet, because it goes right to the heart of the issue about the increase in the fees and what was represented in terms of how they would be used.
Okay, uh, we are ready to resume, uh, the city commission meeting. We are on item number eighteen, which is public hearing of Resolution number two-five-two-dash-nineteen, establishing the rates for the fire service assessment fee for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and approving the assessment roll. Mr. Green?
Yes, Jeff Green, City Administrator, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna move it to...
It's gonna be the same presentation that we gave at the workshop, but for those that didn't see it at home, we're gonna try and go through.
Is, is supporting, you know, various positions, um, as, from my understanding, so.
And I, I would also point out, because we also got this question, and I, I think it's good for everyone to hear it, you know, some places don't have this fee. But, for example, Palm Beach County doesn't charge a fire, um, a fire assessment fee, but they do dedicate three-and-a-half mils of the property taxes in those areas that are covered by the county fire service towards those costs. We don't have that luxury, because we have one-millage rate that is basically combined to provide coverage for everything that we have.
That's one more question, Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Could you, could you talk about the, uh, improved ISO rating? And my question would be, so, you know, we anticipate if this were to pass that we would, um, be approximately seven-point-three million dollars with six-point-nine million collected.
Yes.
Where are those funds going? Are they, are they going for additional staff? Are they going for equipment, all of the above? Can you, do we have, I'm assuming we have an idea, a clear idea of where those funds are gonna be?
I will tell you that, again, based on what year we're talking about, we're going to be adding these capital spending numbers that I showed you before of about thirty million dollars. It is our plan, um, if this passes, to, um, go ahead and do the staffing for nine additional positions. We will accelerate two trucks into next year. Um, that will, in effect, cover the first year's worth of costs, and then going forward, it will, you know, it will go towards additional capital trucks and, um, Station Nine.
But an, an additional nine full-time positions added to the city?
That's right.
Okay.
So in terms of what was presented to the board, you've just heard, uh, that presentation of the additional increase being used for nine additional firefighters and two trucks on the basis that an additional three million dollars in revenue was going to be collected. And here is where, when we talk about the fallacies in that presentation, what the board adopted in FY twenty, if you look at the six-point-nine million over the four million rounded, that is about an additional three million. So that would have covered the nine firefighters and one truck. The presentation of two trucks did not include enough funding to fund a second truck and then a second set of firefighters to staff that truck. So that was the fallacy in the presentation. If three million of additional revenue was going to be generated from the increase in the fees, and that three million was enough to cover nine firefighters and nine trucks, when it's presented that you're gonna bring two trucks in and you need another nine firefighters to cover that, if you will, then the revenue would have had to generate six million dollars to cover that. So from my perspective, based on the math, the numbers don't work. The numbers simply don't work. And in talking to the city's fire chief, she's indicated that she is not clear on how the nine firefighters came about, because that would not have been the number of firefighters that she would have determined we needed to fund an additional truck. Her number would have been higher. So if I were to take the advice of the city's fire chief, which for this purpose I am, that would have been a higher number than nine. So again, if you look at that higher number and a fire truck, three million would have been tight. There was absolutely no additional revenue coming in to cover another set of firefighters and a second truck. Again, a fallacy in the presentation. This is what was adopted in the FY twenty budget, six-point-nine or seven million dollars. And in all of the nuances, I'm certain that the board didn't drill down and ask the question to go back to that August presentation and say, you made a presentation or representation that it was gonna be nine firefighters and two trucks. If we're adopting seven million, which is only three million, how does that math work? How can we get two set of firefighters and two trucks out of three million if one set of firefighters and one truck costs us three million? The math doesn't work, a fallacy in the presentation.
Hold on, we have a question, Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Administrator. To that question, I guess, here, here would be the question that I have, having sat, sat through that hearing. I guess during that time, we're looking at fire assessment fees that cover one-time capital cost. So my assumption, good, bad, or indifferent, during that conversation was not that just the incremental increase was going towards those firefighters in that truck, but that the entire pot of revenue would, would somewhat absorb that as well. So it wasn't just the incremental increase at that time going from fifty to one hundred, where we said, we're gonna have this incremental increase that's going to cover those firefighters and, and equipment, but it was the whole collection. So as year prior, fire assessment fees went to cover one-time capital fees, so I wouldn't be paying for the same truck the following year. I'd be paying for something different. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, and it's understood, and I'm speaking specifically to what was represented. What was represented, that, that increase would be used for the nine firefighters and two trucks. And if you go back to what was said, the two trucks would be accelerated and bought into the budget. So now, whether or not there was intent, and, and again, there could have been discussion, again, that I was not privy to, that in looking at the overall budget for the fire assessment fee, that it was going to absorb two set of additional firefighters, whether the number was nine that was presented or thirteen that the fire chief felt is needed, and then two, uh, new trucks. But based on the allocation, that wasn't dialed in. That, that wasn't dialed in, and that could have certainly been the intent.
Sure, and, and having been the recipient of that presentation, I guess I had, I had a different interpretation than thinking it was going to be the increment, because my interpretation was that the entire collection would be allocated, to some extent, to those pieces of equipment. So I guess it's a, I see how it could be ambiguous in interpretation, but at the time, and when I adopted it, I did that based upon the fact that I thought it was the entire increment. So the funding was there, and the math did work, um, for those. So I guess I just offer that as a, as a perspective sitting on the other side of this day, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, so noted. But, uh, again, when we look at, you know, missed opportunities, if, in fact, the way that the budget was adopted or presented there at the August twenty-sixth, if there was some concern about what was represented to the board, was not included in the budget, or if there was any ambiguity about it or confusion, there were some opportunities to have rectified the record by the leadership that's questioning this. The board at the first, uh, public hearing on September twelfth certainly could have had another discussion to make certain everybody was clear that this budget for the fire fee needs to include the additional firefighters to cover these two trucks and to clarify and make sure that the two trucks were dialed into the budget. The nine firefighters were not included in the FY twenty budget. If you look at the FYT count, the firefighters were not included in the budget that the board adopted for FY twenty. They were not included, and the record shows that. So when the fire chief came to me and said, we were indicated or told that we were getting nine new firefighters, and that's what was presented to the board, I'm ready to bring them online. Well, when I go to the budget and talk to finance and talk to HR, they tell me no additional firefighters were adopted in the budget. There's no money in the budget, you know, to hire them. Chief bought the engine one back into service, so because they were not put in the FY twenty budget, we then had to use existing personnel. That part of the story that's being put out is accurate, that part of it is accurate. We staffed it with overtime, and that overtime was in excess of a million dollars. When we started getting into the budget process for FY twenty-one, Chief Matty and I looked at how much we were spending in overtime compared to how much it would cost the city for the nine firefighters, and it was a saving of a couple of hundred thousand dollars. And the decision was made to then put the nine firefighters in this year's budget under the fire fee as was presented. So that's how they got in the budget for this year, but they were clearly not included in the budget for FY twenty. Again, a fallacy in the representation that was made to the board.
Ms. Johnson, let me make sure I understand. So there were two budget hearings, one on September twelfth, two thousand nineteen, another on September twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. And the budgets that were presented in those budget hearings, are you saying that in those budgets, the nine additional firefighters were not in the drafts of the budget presented at those two hearings?
That is what I'm saying, and the budget manager can confirm that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. McDermott, do you?
I think you're on. Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm confirming that. On both hearings, there were no FTEs added to the fire assessment fee.
Thank you.
So in an effort to...
I'm sorry, Commissioner Shoff has a question.
I'm sorry.
My apologies, because I know we're going back in time, but, you know, I guess when something is presented to this board, I assume that it's going to be put into a presentation and, and presented to us as, as factual. Does anyone know why those firefighters were not put in? Was it just overlooked? Was it that someone was directed not to put them into the budget?
I'm gonna let the budget manager speak to that. I want to footnote that during the time of your two budget hearings in September twenty nineteen, I was about a month on the job as an assistant city administrator, so I can't speak to anything that happened with that budget, because I was just coming on board. Uh, Ms. McDermott?
Yes, uh, budget manager, and she's absolutely correct. But what happened with these hearings is, um, I was completely at shock that nine firefighters were, were going to even be considered. And at the time, the general fund budget had been pretty much done and accounted for. When this came in, I did ask my boss at the time, uh, am I, are we to make a quick scramble to rearrange the general fund as well as the fire assessment fee fund? Uh, there was no discussion with Jeff Green at that time. I made a couple of inquiries, and there was no direction to make any changes in the budget, and I was told to keep the presentation as it was. And that's how it ended up this way. Ms. Johnson came along, we corrected it the following year. I would like to say that we did get, um, uh, loans and different means of financing that originally we were only going to get three fire trucks on a loan. We made some changes, we ended up getting four. So all along in the next budget year and coming, we are taking care of those fire truck needs. That is, uh, I mean, we are totally dedicated to their equipment. But you're correct, you spoke, we looked at the video again, we all went back to the video. Uh, however, there was no direction to give to budget, um, and, and that's what happened, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Proceed, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
So I want to now move on to the last, uh, issue here in terms of, you know, the, um, commitment to hold quarterly work sessions. It may be in terms of how it's being styled in the, uh, public, you know, of administration not upholding its, uh, commitment to hold quarterly work sessions on the fire assessment fee. And it has been couched in a context of transparency. And unfortunately, when you use the term of transparency with, uh, city government, it has a negative connotation that somehow we're not being up, uh, forthright with what we're doing, so we're not being transparent. And I would remind you, Mayor and the commission, that all governments operate under the sunshine law. So everything we do is made available to the public. There is no such thing that we can operate, and how we operate cannot be disclosed to the public. From my perspective, it goes to an issue of just reporting out, not an issue of whether or not we're being transparent, because there's nothing that we do that we can't make available to the public. So this first issue, based on my review of the meetings, came up during the presentation with your former city administrator. There was quite a bit of robust discussion and the board's desire to have quarterly work sessions, updates on the use of the fire assessment fee. That was in August of twenty nineteen, as we just walked through a clip of that presentation. Because the former city administrator, uh, transitioned from the city in October of twenty nineteen, two months after the presentation, there were no quarterly work sessions held with the board. So we then went through this interim period from October to January, where I was the interim city administrator, was then appointed permanent city administrator in January of twenty twenty. When we got to the budget meetings, uh, that August and September, then Commissioner Nearing brought up the fact about quarterly work sessions being held. We put a schedule for quarterly work sessions in the work session schedule that was distributed. I take responsibility as now the city administrator sitting in the saddle. We had the first quarterly update on the fire assessment fee in January of twenty twenty-one. And as the board will recall, that presentation perhaps was in a confusing manner. The mayor made it clear he was not pleased with the format of the presentation and that he wanted to see it come back in a manner where it could be clearly laid out and understood. And to my detriment, which I take responsibility for, I stepped in and asked the staff to not bring forward a presentation on the use of the funds until I can get my arms around the fire assessment fee and understand it. Because if I'm going to have to answer the questions and help explain to the board what is being done with the fire assessment fee, I have to understand it myself. And my way of understanding it is a combination of what I'm informed of orally from the staff and then my own reading of the fire assessment fee, the history. So I didn't have the luxury to just drop everything else that I am responsible for as the city administrator and just focus on the twelve-or-so-year history to get up to speed on it. So there was not, there was not an update, a quarterly update in April or July, as had been dialed into your work session. That falls squarely on my shoulder. The reason for it not being done, I'm giving you a reason, not an excuse, and I'm not asking you all to give me a pass, but I'm asking you all to not accept that in the context that as your city administrator... that as your city administrator, it's an effort to hide or disguise how the use of those funds have been done. You know, that simpler is illogical thinking, illogical thinking, to put that story out into the atmosphere. So when we go on to the use of them, I provided this in hard copy and hard copies are available for members of the public in terms of how the funds have been used. Again, all of the use of the funds by category are consistent and in compliance with the ordinance 4141-08. And we can go through the various line items, we can provide the board as well as members of the public, as well as members of the press who found this story to be newsworthy, all of the itemized detail. I also want to footnote that as part of the city's annual review by the external auditor of our finances, they looked at the fire assessment fee. If there was any misuse, misapplication, or misappropriation of those fees, it would have been noted in the annual financial statement and there is no such notation. That information is available to you, Mayor, and the board, as well as members of the public and members of the press. So we have to line up the facts with the story and the facts tell that the city is using those fees in compliance with the law as is legally permissible. So where do we go from here?
Let me ask another question, a question. Is there anything in the law that requires a quarterly reporting out of the fire assessment fee?
There is nothing in the ordinance that requires that. That was a request from the Commission and it was made on two different occasions. The first request came at the time of the former city administrator and the second request came under my administration.
But it's not a legal requirement?
It is not a legal requirement. No, it is not, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Administrator for this summary sheet. I just had a question on the funds. Could someone tell me what Fund 210 for debt service actually goes for and Fund 304 for capital?
Sure, Linda McDermott Budgets. 210 fund is where we transfer money for principal and interest and that is for the capital. Most of it is for their fire trucks, some of it is for the buildings. And then you also have other transfers for capital, which you might see as identified as Fund 304, and that is for absolute assets that are purchased and considered capital. And another comment, the Budget Office does quarterly review of every fund, general fund as well. So our, of course, we do it in accounting methods, which is a lot of numbers, and Ms. Johnson is trying to summarize it a little bit better for the board's understanding, but at any time, we do quarterly reports. I have meetings with department heads. So that's a practice of the Budget Department and my responsibility to know where we stand at all times. So I just want to make you comfortable.
You may proceed, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. So in terms of next steps, next week on August 10th, the board has a budget work session. Wherein there will be a presentation on the proposed general fund balance budget at the board's pleasure. We can also include the presentation on the proposed FY22 use of the fire assessment fee. That would be an opportunity for you to go through a line item review in terms of what is proposed and we can include in that proposed budget on the fire fees where those particular proposed uses comport with the ordinance. And then at the August 23rd City Commission meeting, the board will hear a presentation on the preliminary general fund balance budget that will take into consideration any input that is feasible from the August 10th work session. Again, we can go through the fire fee proposed uses on August 23rd and then moving on to September 8th, which is the first public hearing on the proposed adopted budget. That's another opportunity. If the board wants to continue to drill down in the fire assessment fee revenue proposed budget, we can also do it again at your September 23rd, second and final budget hearing on the general fund budget and all of the other budgets. So at the board's pleasure, we can bring forward the proposed budget for the fire fee assessment revenue another four times here between now and the September 23rd.
Let's plan on having that information at August 10th. That'll give me and the commissioners a week to go through this document and then, so on August 10th, you can plan to have a discussion of the proposed, so this will be the proposed expenditures from the fire fee going forward, correct?
Yes, and that is, that is prepared.
Okay. Does that work, commissioners? Okay.
And Mayor, at this time, I would like to open it up for any questions that you and the board may have of the fire chief regarding the fire fees or the operations of the department, as well as any further questions for the budget manager and certainly any further questions from Deputy City Attorney Nancy Urchak and any further questions for me as well. And I thank you for sitting through this presentation and having to take a walk back into how we got to where we started from to where we are today. So I want to thank you for your patience here.
Just a point of clarification, on the 10th, be prepared to answer any questions on the third quarter expenditures, expenditures to date, or at least the third quarter on the fire assessment fee and then the proposed budget going forward. So there are two aspects, right?
Yes.
So in effect, we will have the quarterly, the third quarter report, if you will, on the fire assessment fee on the 10th, which is the document you just handed us.
That is correct.
And so we'll have an opportunity to ask any questions on that document and then you'll have a presentation on expenditures, proposed expenditures for the fire assessment fee going forward.
Yes, for fiscal year '22.
Right, okay. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Administrator for putting all of this together. You know, I certainly, having gone through this process through several iterations and under different administrators, I think this has brought a lot of light to the uses of the fire fee. And one of the things I had previously requested, and I think we're probably a little far down the road now for our upcoming fiscal year, but I think it would behoove us to have a five-year or a 10-year plan for the fire assessment fee. I think it would give us a chance to take a look at how much we want to dedicate to the built environment, to equipment, if there are positions that are going to be funded out of this fee in perpetuity, you know, what portion is allocated to staff. I think those are important questions that, you know, certainly the fire chief has an important say to weigh in on and Mayor, fellow commissioners, according to what our needs are. You know, I know Commissioner Pedusis District having a nice new fire station, needs some staffing and, you know, every one of us has needs throughout our districts. And so to try to get together a master plan, knowing what's coming down the line, I think that would be helpful for me and helpful for the public that as we're going down the road and we do end up on a general cadence of fee updates, then that gives the opportunity to say, here's where we are today with the fire fee, here's where we are in our capital plan and on the outlook, has something in the environment changed that we need to change our outlook of what our fire assessment fee master plan is?
Yes, and Commissioner Shoff, you have certainly made that noted in the record. And so as we look at down the road, what I have put on the slide for the board's consideration, you know, is that sometime in the fall of, well, it has fall for fiscal year '22, but that would be in this upcoming fall, which would be '21, but we're planning for the FY23 budget process, that we have that strategic planning session and then take a look at, you know, those kinds of matters here and start planning for, you know, how we want to utilize or if we want to change the use of the fire fee. Because you, you need to do that in advance of getting into the budget process. So if we were to do that this coming fall, I can take that direction and dial it into the budget process for fiscal year '23. So again, I'm asking the Mayor and your consideration to have such a strategic planning session in this fall. The budget process usually kicks off in February of every year, so if we were to do it in the fall, that gives me enough lead time to take that direction from there and then dial it into the budget for fiscal year '23 moving forward.
Great, thank you for scheduling that, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you for the clarification and the presentation. I just wanted to go back a little bit to the 2019 video we were watching and just touch upon the idea that we were raising the fire fee because we needed additional services. I believe that video went on to say we needed two trucks and 18 new firefighters. I thought the number that was given was around 3 million for the total, but I understand that was a previous administration. But I guess my concern is that I know that we don't have those, we don't have two new fire trucks in place and we don't have 18 new firefighters in place. So I'm concerned that we, while we're using the fee in a legal manner because it's all going towards the fire department, my understanding was those were the needs to have additional services offered to our residents. So I'm just wondering, you know, if we have a plan in place for, you know, going back and looking at that, are those still our needs? Do we have a plan for another fire truck and these additional firefighters or is there something, another plan? It might be a question for Chief Matty, but you know, if those were the things that we were telling our residents that were necessary and we were going to be putting more services in place for them, that's why we voted for this and why I voted for it last year. And I just want to make sure that we're still on track with those items. Thank you.
I'm going to let Chief Matty speak to that, but I do want to just make one footnote. What was represented was nine firefighters and two trucks. And what I indicated that if nine is needed for one truck, then another nine would have been needed for the second truck, but the representation was for nine in two trucks. I'll let Chief Matty speak to the balance of the question.
Thank you for the question, Diana Matty, Fire Chief. So there are a number of outstanding needs. We did get 50% of that accomplished. We got Engine One back in service downtown, bringing a pumper back into service in our most densely populated zone that had been previously taken out of service in 2009 due to the economic decline at that time. So it was a big step forward in improving our staffing, going towards our future ISO review rating, to have that pump and water back downtown and improve those response times. So there remains a number of existing needs throughout our city, to include Fire Station Nine is currently living in a trailer and, you know, it's a temporary facility that we have to evacuate during hurricanes and that's a pressing need. As the population grows in Station Eight's area, we're going to need to eventually fully staff that area. We have a building downtown where our fire station number one was built in 1979 and they moved in in 1980. That is beyond its lifespan and beyond its physical capacity for the services we provide now. Station Six in Commissioner Warren's zone is, was built for three people in 1985. Again, another, another need. So I do agree with your Commissioner Shoff's urging that we do a strategic plan because there are some very significant needs that this fire department has and this city has going forward and we can't lose focus on those things, you know, in the big picture. So if that answers your question, maybe I can fine tune it if you have any further.
Let me weigh in on that because what was articulated in 2019 as the needs of the department was the view of a particular stakeholder, i.e. the union. That didn't come from the fire chief at that time articulating that this is what she needs the fire assessment fee for. So don't get it confused that that was necessarily the official position from the fire department as to what the needs were. That was the view of the union as to what they wanted to see the fire assessment fee for. And they were saying that in order for us to support the increase in the fire assessment fee, we need to get X, Y, and Z. That wasn't necessarily the needs articulated by this person running the department at the time. That was a negotiated deal supposedly between the fire union and the city, then city administrator. You understand the difference? Okay.
Yes.
Mayor, thank you for bringing that up because, you know, I guess where I struggled to that point is, you know, we on this commission, especially under sunshine laws, are held to former city administrator, in this case, the information that were presented there. And I know you can't answer the question as to why former city administrator wouldn't take that information back to Chief Matty, but when we received that information, we receive it as this is what administration is pushing forward, respectfully understanding your comments previously that that wasn't your interpretation. And so I think to Commissioner Fox's point, we took that as that was the need of the fire department. And so maybe a step from here is really determining, you know, I too struggle with these were the promises that were made, whatever pretense they were made under, these were the promises that were made. So where are we on fulfilling those promises? Or if that is not the need, that is the specific need, then what is it and let's fulfill that need and make this right? You know, I think that's the place where I'd like to see us move forward is determining what is that need? There was a promise, let's fulfill that promise.
And if I could just speak to that and then I'll let Chief Matty chime in. Commissioner Shoff, you know, I happen to agree with you in principle. I think when a promise is made in the context of the head administrator of the organization, the board should be in a position where you trust and rely on that when you make your policy decisions. And in inheriting that, the effort that has been made to try to fulfill that promise was to staff the fire Engine One that Chief Matty pulled into service with existing personnel, discovering in the midst of the fiscal year that it was not in the budget. And then the second action that was taken in an effort to fulfill that promise was then putting the nine firefighters in the current year budget. So as we look at the effort, we are halfway down the road with fulfilling that, not yet where we want to be, but continuing to act on that. But I want to just underscore two other situations here. You know, there are a number of inherited legacy promises that were made that we have worked through and may discover other ones that we will work through. And one is, I will help the board to recall, and I don't remember which commissioner, it may have come from several commissioners, about a promise that was made to PAV, the Police Athletic League, for $25,000 to help their organization that theoretically was in our budget. The money was not put in the budget. So we unfortunately then had to tell them they relied on that, the money is not in the budget, the money can't be found in the budget because the city is struggling with closing a $10 million gap last year. There was also an incident with the Lake Worth Pioneer with a $65,000 promise or commitment and that was actually the agreement came before the board. When I was contacted by the attorney for that organization saying, "We're ready to move forward with that monument, we have our money in place, we want the city to now bring the $65,000 to the table." When we looked in the budget, the money was not in the budget. So that put us in a very bad predicament. So the mayor and I met with the attorney and simply had to apologize that the board had approved the $65,000, it was not put in the budget, and to ask them to work with us, and they did. So they put the project on hold until we can get the money in the budget. The money is in this year's budget, so we're moving forward with that. Now, I'm not going to bore, bore the board with the list, with the ongoing list that I have been accumulating of promises, financial promises that were made and are unfulfilled. And the majority of them, I'm not in a position where we can try to work some of them out because they are big ticket promises to the tune of millions of dollars. And so we've just had to meet with those individuals and say, "This is a promise that we can't fulfill." It's not a predicament that I like to be in, but it's a predic- It's not a predicament that I like to be in, but it's a predicament that I find myself in and that I inherited, unfortunately.
And thank you, administrator, I certainly understand that. And I understand some of the examples we're given were promises that were made and others are promises that were made on the record to your point about monuments and things that had come before the board. And I appreciate that we take best efforts to fulfill those promises. And I'm confident that, you know, I think that's really what I'm asking for here is how do we get that best effort forward? I appreciate that we've made it halfway there. So just to the extent that I can be supportive to get us the other halfway there as 1/5 of this day, I stand ready to do that.
I appreciate that.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for the amount of research that went into this presentation today. I just, I wanted to comment on your comment about the, the lack of quarterly presentations. I certainly agree with you that we have to be careful that just because a lack of presentation was made, the quarterly reporting that we had asked for, that that did not equal misuse of the funds. I certainly get that. I think the part that I struggle with is, is that my role as a city commissioner is to ensure proper use of our budget and of our funds in the city. And when this was, when this increase was passed on the dais, we asked for those quarterly updates. And I certainly understand the reasons why the, and what you described to us is for those delays. However, I think if we had had those, maybe some of this would have come up sooner, would have allowed for us to, to find out that it wasn't, those positions weren't in the budget. And I hope that we are now planning for them moving forward.
Yes, and again, I take responsibility for that because I think if I had not made the administrative call that I was going to step in the lead role of trying to get up to speed on it and then be in a position when the presentations were made, the quarterly updates, to be able to participate in the discussion because I was up to speed on it, the staff would have met the intent of holding quarterly updates to the board. So again, that falls on my shoulder and I take responsibility for that. And I'm glad to hear you say, Commissioner Lambert, that not holding those does not equate to misuse of the funds because that's critically important. No commissioner sitting on that dais should have an inkling of a thought, a doubt, or whether or not the city is complying with its ordinance. Rather, I made a misstep with taking the lead on it and not moving forward with the two updates, you should not have an inkling of a doubt that those funds are being used appropriately. And so we will get to the point now where we will adhere to the quarterly updates, with or without your city administrator, those quarterly updates will be held. And so I thank you for your patience and recognition that one doesn't equate to a misuse of funds.
Commissioner Warren.
Thank you for your efforts to fulfill promises that have been made. I think at some point we have to look at the feasibility of those promises and whether or not fulfilling all of those things are in the best direction of the city. If they were not made on sound ground, if promises were simply made for the moment for, you know, people to feel good, then I don't know that, that's something that we are in a position to ensure happens. And at some point, I think we just have to make tough decisions on what we can actually fulfill, what makes good sense for the city and what direction we're going in. Because if we're trying to adhere to a promise that puts us in a bankrupt position, is that necessarily the right judgment? Is that the right direction that we want to take?
I couldn't agree with you more. And I want to assure you that the reason that the other list of promises that I'm not putting into the record have not been acted on because they are not financially feasible. And it is not an option for the mayor and your city administrator to consider efforts on a failed promise that will put this city on a path to financial recovery takeover by the state. So there are a number of those failed promises that's on my growing list as I peel back that we have sat with the individuals who are expecting us to deliver on those promises and say, unfortunately, we are not going to be able to fulfill this promise, that it was not made in a financially feasible manner that the city can meet. And so I couldn't agree with you more and I thank you for that comment and observation.
President Peduzzi.
Thank you, mayor. If I remember correctly, back when we were initially discussing the proposed increase to the fire assessment fee, there was a lot of the same discussion as to the appropriate uses of the fee, why do we need the increased fee? To get the stakeholder buy-in, there was those representations made. To get our vote for an increased fee, there were representations made. And we now know that a, that a number of those, those things that were promised or were represented is going to be included were not. And so I just think that, you know, we just need to realize that this is not even a new argument. I think there was question back then when we were talking about this as to whether there was really a need for this fee, what the uses of the fee would be, and that they would actually be used appropriately in the way that the administration was representing that they would be used to get the buy-in from the stakeholders and the union and ultimately the commissioners in voting for it. So I think that we have to remember that and, and we have to be cognizant that people are listening and people are watching and we have to have faith in, in our, in our system. And, you know, we have to acknowledge that there were representations made and they weren't fulfilled. And so we have to be careful, I think, moving forward, that we make sure that either we don't make representations that we can't fulfill or that we fulfill the representations that we make, the promises that we make. That's just my general comment, thank you.
And I agree with it, Commissioner Peduzzi.
Any other questions, comments on this item? All right, thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I think we have a path forward for discussions, future discussions about the fire assessment fee. So we'll look forward to that on August 10th and we'll have that dialed in going forward for, for quarterly reports.
Again, thank you, board.